You have seen before these commitments and contracts for uh this taxi wage project. Now we also have to make our consultant hole on risk contract and so that's pretty much what. You're approving today is the contractor's contract. In here, just as a reminder, um especially for Commissioner Mon. On these, we do go through a request for proposal for uh engineering services and we did that back in. Uh twenty twenty two, that contract goes up until twenty twenty seven. Uh they help us through kind of the negotiation, the contracts that FAA requires are kind of like the intermediary. Between us and the FFA um and so. Super, super good company, um but this gets them that approval, they. They have a set, a set normalized fee that they charge for design. And that RFP and that initial contracts kind of binds them to it, but then for each project. They break out per task, um and this is one of those tasks that are on there and so because of that. Then with the tasks, they produce kind of their engineering fees, line item by line item, you kind of see that on. Their exhibit and it's really, really small. But what I like about it is the FAA requires us to go out to independent fee analyzer. And so there are two within the state of Utah, each time I send these estimates. And these fees to that independent third body and he verifies. That yes, you're kind of getting a good bang for your buck and everything is legit and so. So that's kind of in summation, but really what you are here today is that consideration. The contract with JVA.
Well, any questions? Or comments?
No questions, motion to approve.
I'll second.
On favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay. To the public hearings, which is item number nine, consideration approval of amending ordinance to ordinance. Twenty twenty four dash zero four A updating San Juan County consolidated fee schedule. In accordance with Utah code seventeen dash fifty three dash two eleven, you had heard from Jeremy. Our emergency medical services director, he had explained the fees and the changes that he need to. Needed to have, especially those running the state. So he has gone through and done that on this side, so that is really. That is the only changes that took place was within emergency services. Everything else is.
Do we need to go into a public hearing mode?
We do need to make a motion.
Motion to move into public hearing.
I'll second.
On favor say aye.
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 Aye. We are in public.
Okay, there's Sheriff Lacy is the only other one on, so no other publics are in attendance. You can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Actually, I think uh sheriff has some comments, that's why he's still with us.
He he has another item coming up on him.
On the EMS fee, right Sheriff?
I think he's waiting for his own item.
All right, do we stay in public hearing for the next?
Close the public hearing and then make a motion.
Okay, motion to close public hearing for item number nine.
We have a second.
Second.
On the favor say aye.
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 Okay, so now we have to go.
Make a motion for the.
Public here number item ten.
Uh motion to, we're acting on item nine now, right? Motion to approve the uh or uh. The consolidated fee schedule.
Doesn't that need to come back next month, it's under action items? Can we approve that in the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
It does not need to come back under as an action item?
No.
Mm-hmm, that's why we approved to come back. Okay, that we have a motion on for number nine.
Motion to approve the consolidated fee schedule.
Have a second.
I second, however, I guess we can just bring this back when we have changes.
That's what we.
Keep doing. Okay.
EMS changes.
All right, okay, second.
On favor say aye.
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 Okay, the next item is item ten, consideration and approval of resolution of San Juan County Board of Commissioners. Establishing the sworn death BP plan for the county sheriff's office and authorizing the correlating budget adjustments for the end of the year.
Motion to move into public hearing mode.
I'll second.
On favor say aye.
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 Let's see, only one here is the sheriff, if you have any questions for him. If not, we can take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
On favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes, closing the public hearing.
Now we act.
Now you can act on it.
Well, do we have any comments we wanna make or any discussion on?
Oh, motion to approve.
I I I guess we can do that before.
I'll second.
Can, before we finalize, can I just make some comments regarding this? I, you know, I'm not trying to say no, but I think that we are so close to the. Time where we can discuss budget and where money goes and. And so I am a little hesitant to say yes right now because within the next few weeks. We're gonna be looking at budgets and trying to see where we stand with the budget. Insofar as to make decision, because what happened is we have a certain amount of money. And but also. There's um. There's cost that goes that we need to take care and and so. I think it's very, very important that we know income, where income comes. And what share of their income take cares of the. Different things we need to take care as a county expenses, I I. I admire the sheriff for trying to have a good function department. And I think that's a a desire of all the departments, we have many departments that I need and. I have in that that same situation and and at this time is it, at least for me, it's kind of hard to. To listen to other departments that they feel like they're understaffed and underpaid and so. And then, you know, that is where I coming from about this, I think that. When we revise the budget and we see what is the total cost of. At each of the departments and what is. What they're bringing in, but how is this planned, because sometime. You know, we may have the tendency to say my money, but are we using money for other departments? To help us pay our bills, so that's where I coming from, I think we need, we are so close. Being where the, where we gonna be reviewing budget and at that time we can look. Uh what, what is coming in and what is uh. What is costing for the departments to operate and where those funds are coming to cover those things I. I been in a meeting with a board meeting with the library, the library has astronomical higher fees and those are things we need to look at. And so we need to make a effort for everybody and but that, you know, that's where my position is and so. Anyway, so it, that doesn't mean the I don't support. The sheriff department and all the things they do, I know everybody's works hard and ideally. It's gonna be, it would be really nice for us to be able to have all the department function and everybody feeling good about. And it's one of the side of thing is when we're looking for salary for people and we don't, just because we're a public institution. We don't have that ma- that much money to pay out and. Anyway, and and I still concerned about. The next year, we depend a lot on federal funds, we don't know what's gonna be uh replaced or. Or gone from us and so it'll take a while for us to start generating fund and I'd much rather. Sacrifice a little bit than have to say to somebody. We had to start like, like all people, I think that'd be a sad day if we start telling people that we cannot afford them, so. Just, I just ask for a little bit wait, to wait till we have the budget so we can review things and then we can go from there.
Like to call for the question, Madam Chair, so we can vote.
Anyway, so any other questions? So we have a motion.
I vote in favor.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
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 The motion passes.
How do you vote?
I, I'm not voting aye, I just, I express my feeling, how I feel about it, so. They have to be a hundred percent?
No, you don't have to abstain or.
Well.
Are you abstaining?
I'll just say aye then, that's just aye. For this time, I just, I'm not talking indefinitely, I was just talking about this time to look at the budget and see. Who's paying what and what we need to do, but anyway, so. So we have two in favor and the motion passes.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is your commission. Commission report, sorry. Commission report?
Do you want me to start? Okay, um for my report, commissioners, um. Uh really, it's just a. An ask for the the public in the community. I know that currently the government shutdown is trying to resolve itself and a lot of families. Who rely on SNAP benefits are impacted. Uh in the interim, I know that there's been efforts among the community members to try and work. Together to to support families who are in need. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of of resources that perhaps the community might. Want to be aware of, um the first one is that uh. There are pantries that are available in in our county. Uh one pantry that I'm aware of is down in Bluff, Bluff Food Pantry. Uh location is at the Bluff Community Center, that's on Third East. And Mulberry Avenue in Bluff, the the times that the Bluff. Community Center, the Bluff Food Fan Pantries open is on Tuesdays between twelve thirty. To two thirty uh PM, there's also a uh. There's also the Saint Christopher's Mission in Bluff that is. Open, uh they, they have some. Some resources for community members who are in need of food, uh we've got the. Jack, Jack Chase, who is there at the Saint Christopher's Mission. And they do have a community uh food garden. That they they're able to to grow some food and they're gonna continue that next year, but. Saint Christopher's Mission is another resource for those that are in need of food and they're open. Pretty much during the week, uh and then of course our um food. Utah Food Bank, there's one in Montezuma Creek, uh there's one in Monument Valley. Uh there's, there's another in Blanding, that's also a resource for our citizens that are in need. Uh Utah Navajo Health Systems also is, I'm sure. Activating themselves to be a resource to the community, uh UNHS is located in Montezuma Creek. Uh and Monument Valley and also Navajo Mountain, so I just wanted to highlight. This for our community members that may be in need, um I know that in recent. News that the state allocated some funding towards the the state Utah Food Bank. Cause I think they have some buying power to be able to purchase food. And I think of last mention, they hoping there might be some. Um help from local citizens to unload when that time comes. To be available to to help with uh that distribution. Uh not only in Blanding, but also in in Montezuma Creek and Monument Valley. So, um. One big request that I come with is we could somehow put this. Information on our county website, so that the community members have a place where they can. Visit the website to look at options that are available in our county. Um in case they have an immediate need for their families, um another request was. Uh the concern for elders that have meals on wheels, I'm not sure. If that is still uh something that uh the county senior program does. But um if there's a need for meals on wheels, whether they have been impacted or not. But um at least uh maybe. Some updates in regards to the senior county program on. Is that a Mills on Wheels program still in place and is that being impacted? Uh and then of course, just uh any new updates as far as uh places, families or. Um families can go to to get assistance. Uh if we can make that available to our community members, that would be, that would be awesome, so that's. That's the only thing I wanted to highlight, uh commissioners in my report. Um and that uh there are willing community members throughout the county that would love to help when the time comes. If uh Utah Food Bank, you know, transports um food and they need manpower. Uh just let, let us know, let everyone know of that and I'm sure you'll have a lot of volunteers available for that. Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners.
So I don't have a whole lot to report, I went on vacation and so. I crammed a lot in before I left and then took ten days and got back, but I I I have started back with a few media. Uh well, the next three weeks are pretty packed, but um Mud Springs, still really trying to work through the dynamics with that. And um with UDOT and SITLA, so um. We had temporarily a ribbon cutting set for September, November, excuse me, and that has been canceled. We've now moved it to April, but it may be even pushed back into the fall, just it's a much bigger project and and getting. Grand County, you know, to help with this and and get, which they're a hundred percent on board and have been great. Um but there's so many moving pieces and especially with the government shutdown, interestingly enough, some of the data that we need from um. Like maps and that has not been updated, so we do not have the update, so we're waiting for that and it has to come back when. The government shutdown is no longer in existence, so anyhow, I'll have more next um time on all of that, so thank you.
Thank you, um I just wanna. Briefly show appreciation for our food uh banks, those have been an amazing project to have in our area. And what a opportunity to have them. All the way down south and one of the things that I had the opportunity to talk to the main director when she was here for an open house. Uh the food bank in Blanding and one of the thing they had incorporated, while I was visiting. Uh. Navajo Mountain, one time the senior center, they were short of money. I'm short of food and I said, well, I can go home and and get my neighbors and bring some food and they said, well, it had to be as soon. They have a a menu this plan for all the center and it takes traditional food for them. And so when I visited with the director of the whole. Uh of the food bank organization. She informed me that now they are bringing to the, to the Navajo Mountain, they're bringing. Traditional ingredients for them to cook and and even though I was willing to come home and. I knew my neighbors were giving me food I could take back, it wasn't the right kind of food. And so just to know that they are receiving that uh. The truck is going to Navajo Mountain and it, and they. They have in the food drive coming to them to the chapter and. And working with uh. With the chapters, um I find, you know, the meetings, people don't realize this, but the meetings are held on Sundays. And and so some. I tell people, yeah, this is about a job, because there's some weekends I don't have to travel down south. And I, one of the encounters I have is that sometimes two meetings I schedule the same day, so I have. Two months ago, in in September, I had. The West Water Meeting and the OJ, and the Navajo Mountain meeting the same time, so I went to Navajo Mountain. This month, uh on October. Again, I have the same situation, so this time I take turn and stay with the community, uh who I miss the community. And I just had a some special, special projects that I have been working and I wanted to let them know. One of the things that we had completed to have is a little drop box for books and it's. I just uh needed to go and tell them they was finished and they're so looking forward to have the, the other. Project that I've been working with them is a request from the city of Monticello for their. To be able to get a donation from them, from their old playground and so now they're gonna wait till the spring. Do this uh to. To for the construction and of the playground here in Monticello, so maybe wait for a little bit longer for us to. To hear if they uh. Gonna give that. Give that to the West Water Community. Um. As you, I'll have been busy since like the two month, last two months have been very busy going through different places and. And. And I'm glad when I go there because I make connections and 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 connections are very important to us here because. Sometimes things don't trickle down this way and I don't think they understand our situation, how it is and how we. We are a a big little county. So sometime in those UAC meeting, they talk about the big counties, the little counties and I guess what do we do with a big. County on land and small and resources. And so. The senior centers are still, basically the senior centers should have been called Mills and Wheels Program. Because I think we have. Avoid lots of the complication that sometime we get with senior centers, but they, that's the main purpose, they do so. They're still serving hot meals and they're still doing um. Good and I think one of the things, many of the senior centers are closing in other areas in our county. Does a really good job to subsidize what we get from federal government to make sure the the program continues and. One of the things I have been working, I have been working with the city of Blanding. One of the things we have in Blanding, we have a an amazing football team. With lots of fans that leaves town, they go, they follow the team. And nobody's complaining about that, but it is affecting some of our local business, because when you leave town, it's easy for. Either you spend the money on gas and hotel, whatever, and you also tended to to buy things back and. Seeing that and so we're gonna have a, on December first, we're gonna have an opening. Kind of shopping town type of programs who we're working with businesses and. And working with Ben, he have been so good. Uh to help, help with that, he had the marathon coming pretty soon, so that can keep him busy, but. There's lots of good things I, I, I always keep focusing on housing. I think, I don't know, probably Mac knows the number of houses that we need in San Juan County, see like the thousands. The houses we need in San Juan County, so I don't think that, that um. That we're gonna be running out of houses anytime soon and it take a whole team effort to look at the house situation. Commissioner Harvey and I had the opportunity to work with the inner funds, which have been a. I I wanna have a little bell because every time somebody gets a house in the, or a material for housing. Down south is such a good celebration and. So anyway, so I just, I. Had that much to say, hopefully, but next time I have some more news of other things that are working and so. Thank you and do we have one more motion?
Motion to journey?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
So we have a second, request two second, okay, yep. We did, came back to get you, but you were already.
I was down there and I, I kept walking thinking, are they still in there talking?
I was down there and I I kept walking thinking, are they still in there talking?